Good evening and welcome to the Maplewood City Council Manager Workshop for Monday, October 28. City Clerk Sitte, would you please do a roll call for us?
Councilmember Knudsen.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Councilmember Neblet.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mayor Abrams.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion? Moved by Neblet, seconded by Smith, approval of the agenda for the manager's workshop. Any further discussion? All those in favor? A motion passes. We have no unfinished business. We have new business. We have Commissioner interviews tonight. And the first Commissioner agenda item is an interview with Karen Papa for the Parks and Rec Commission. Councilmembers, I just wanted to update you. I met with City Manager Coleman this morning, and I talked to her about the items that we had, that she had identified with our Commissioners about any barriers that we have to Commissioner interviews. And so what we did, we had Lois Knudsen call the Commissioner, or candidates, and kind of go over the process with them so that they would know and understand kind of what was happening tonight. So, yeah, we're ready to go. City Councilmembers, let's figure out who would like what questions. Any preferences? Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. Under Parks and Rec, I'd like number three, and Environmental and Natural Resources, number two, please.
Okay. All right. Sylvia, you're taking one.
For both of them.
For both of them?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Smith, what's your preference?
I'll take, how about two and three? So, three or two.
Wait a second. Parks and Rec for two, and three for?
Environmental and Rec for three.
Okay. That's what it sounded like. I thought I was doing Jeopardy. Councilmember Knudsen, what would you like?
Whatever's left.
Well, I'll take whatever's left.
Oh, okay. Then I'll do four.
Okay. Do you want to do four on both?
Sure.
Good evening, Ms. Papa. Would you like to join us up at the microphone, please? As you can tell, we have standard questions that we ask. And what we'll do is, we'll go through, each council member has one of the questions, and then we'll give you an opportunity to respond, okay? And then you can ask questions if you have any at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
So, in terms, let's see, our first one, we've got Sylvia, Councilmember Neblet, question number one.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
What do you feel you can bring to the park and recrea-- let me start over. What do you feel you can bring to the Parks and Recreation Commission, including interests, talents, or life experiences?
Well, I actually have lived in Maplewood for many, many years, and at this point, I live on Harvest Park, so I do see a lot of activities going on in the park. I use the park myself quite often. I have a grandson that we use the park a lot. And so I really do see how much the parks, especially that park and a couple other parks, are used. And so I am very encouraged by that, and I'm also encouraged by the fact that it's all been really appropriate, and people just have a great time in our parks. And I would really like for that to always continue to be the case here in Maplewood, because we have beautiful parks, and I'd like for them to remain that way. And if there's any way that I can help with that, by being part of the Parks and Rec Commission, I would really like to be able to help in that matter. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Please discuss why you believe parks and open space are important to the quality of life for Maplewood residents.
They're so important because for families and for people that want to stay active and healthy, and/or even want to become more active and healthy with their lifestyle, the parks just provide a wealth of opportunity for that, whether it be biking, or walking, or bringing your dogs out and about. And I've done all of the above with the parks here in Maplewood. And plus, they're great for the sports activities they provide for children and adults, and they're just really a wonderful asset to the community. I actually think that people from neighboring communities come and take advantage of our wonderful parks as well. And so that's quite a token for the city of Maplewood with that. So I just think they provide a lot of opportunities for people to be outside and enjoy the great outdoors, and sports activities, being healthy, and exercising, and all of the above. It's, they're great for that.
Councilmember Juneman, question number three.
Thank you. In addition to what you've already listed, could you please tell us what you see as the strengths and weaknesses of the Maplewood parks?
The strengths of the Maplewood parks?
And any weaknesses?
Well, the strengths are the fact that we have so many, and it seems like with almost all of the different community areas in Maplewood, there is a park right there within walking distance for people to take advantage of, which is fabulous. A weakness might be that with that usage of parkland becomes the wear and tear that the parks experience too. And so I think that's a concern, that the wear and tear, that the city keep up with whatever wear and tear is happening with the parks, and safety concerns as well. We want to make sure, especially children, are always safe when they are at the parks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Knudsen.
This maybe adds a little bit to your discussion of weaknesses, but what are the big picture kind of challenges for the Maplewood parks? What do you see as the kind of things we need to do well into the future? We have a 2040 plan that we have. What do you see about the parks' challenges for the future?
Well, especially in the park I'm at, it would probably be safety with the BRT going in, and probably a parking area. So we just want to make sure that that whole area remains really safe and secure for the residents, and for the people that are coming to use the park. I think it would be really awesome if there were even really special type of playground equipment put in, such as like the ninja stuff that you see in places like Plymouth, and Eden Prairie, and things like that. But, but that's very long term. But, yeah, I'm just basically concerned about the safety and wear and tear issues, that the parks remain vibrant, and fun, and safe for everybody.
Thank you.
And the last question, discuss what the city's priorities should be regarding park maintenance and improvements to city recreational facilities.
Well, I think maybe I touched upon that with the last question of the big picture of, you know, having a really cool playground area for children, updating some of those playground areas at the parks that are a little older, and then again, figuring out how to keep areas safe at the parks. And as I said, wear and tear, grassland, keeping it all nice and green, and things like that. Although they do an excellent job on keeping everything mowed, and fertilized, and things like that. So, yeah, it's, I mean, the parks look great. So, it just, long term, just keeping them in great condition, and, you know, providing really fun things and active things for kids to do nowadays. I think they see a lot of that, the ninja fun stuff on TV, and I think the bar is a little higher nowadays for play equipment at parks, and things like that. So that could be something to be looked into, too, at some point.
Okay? Thank you. We have Mr. Love and his department in Public Works to thank for keeping our parks maintained so well. So thank you for that. It's nice to hear that. Do you have any other comments, or anything that you would like to add? Because we're done with our questions, and then if you have anything else to add?
I don't really, I just, I love Maplewood. I chose to move back here after I taught for a few years in Waconia, and then my goal was to move back to Maplewood, where I had been brought up since 1959. And so I love it here. I think it's a fabulous city, and the quality of life here is wonderful. And we have great diversity, and we have so much to offer residents, and the parks are a huge part of that. So it's wonderful to see that they're well taken care of, and everything runs smoothly, because they are well-used, the parks are. And that's great. They should be.
Thank you for your interest in serving on our Parks and Rec Commission. We have one other candidate who's interested actually in two Commissions interviews tonight. If you'd like to stay, you're certainly welcome. We'll be voting, and then we'll announce at our council meeting. If you can't stay, then staff will give you a call tomorrow.
Well, that sounds fine. I might have to zip out for another obligation I have, but...
Absolutely. Then the staff will contact you tomorrow, okay?
Okay. That sounds great.
Or you can watch it on TV.
Yes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Papa. Councilmembers, Mr., our next candidate, Matthew Arnett, is interested in both Parks and Rec, and the Environmental and Natural Resources Commission. So we'll be going through both questions, sets of questions with him.
I've been coached.
Welcome, Mr. Arnett. We understand that you are interested in serving on either our Environmental and Natural Resources Commission, or Parks and Rec. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, with a preference.
With a preference?
Yes, ma'am.
And which?
With the Parks and Rec.
Okay. Then, we have two sets of questions for you. And so let's start with Parks and Rec. Councilmember Neblet, you're on for question number one.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnett, what do you feel you can bring to the Park and Recreation Commission, including your interests, talents, life experiences, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. I've always been an enthusiast of the outdoors throughout my life, and it's best represented even to this day, where I'm a camp master for three different camps, two Boy Scout, one private. I was camp mastering last weekend, I will be this coming weekend again. I also am an advisor for what we call the Order of the Arrow, which is the Honor Society for Scouts, where we do quite a few projects that are related to the outdoors. I also mentor scouts through merit badges, as well as I've mentored numerous Eagle Scouts that usually involve Hornaday projects, or outdoor-related projects, be it fishing, ecology, hiking trails, camp clearing, which is also, you know, dovetails nicely into the camp mastering. What I also do bring is, professionally, I'm a project and a program manager, so very process-oriented. Being able to understand what the needs are, communicate them well, actually drive deliverables, and actually see things through. And I do this for camps as well, but professionally, you know, identify what the key stage gates are, and what the deliverable at the end is, and the acceptance, and get everything through to completion.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you discuss why you believe parks and open space are important to the quality of life for Maplewood residents?
It's not just Maplewood residents, but, I mean, our youth especially. I started a company earlier this year that's a tax-exempt 501(c)(3) called YETI, which is Youth Ecology Training Institute. And it's just about youth in the outdoors. It's getting them away in outdoors so that they can appreciate what we have to offer. I mean, it's all around us, especially here in Minnesota. Getting further away from their electronics, or working with it. I've found that integrating cell phones with Mother Nature works well. So maybe allowing them to use it as, it's hardly a phone, it's a camera. You know, take pictures, look up what it is, spark their interest, and say, hey, can you go back and get more pictures of that? Or can you find something? You know, so actually be able to leverage tools to grow their knowledge and desire to be in the outdoors. For the community, it brings people together, if you have the right events, which I also noticed, I did read the system master plan, all 119 pages of it. It is five years old, almost, though. Did I say I was a project manager? So, you know, I do see a lot of items in the master plan that I hadn't really thought of, so it sparks some thought. And that's also what kind of drove me to preferring the Parks and Rec over the other. Because the whole concept of bringing cultures together via events, via the outdoors, via what we have to offer, and what we can offer, is just outstanding. Bringing the community together, bringing people who might not normally interface with one another together. Did that answer your question? Okay, sure.
Councilmember Juneman, question number three.
Thank you. What do you see as the strengths and weaknesses of the Maplewood park system? In 25 words or less.
I think, in case you haven't noticed, I tend to go over. What I was also impressed with in the master plan was the goal to have some sort of facility available within, now I don't recall the number of miles, but it was just a couple of miles of everybody. And I thought that was significant, you know, to try to cover everybody. And I'm in one of the less-represented areas, which surprised me, because there's quite a bit around me. But again, what there is to offer for everybody, and the breadth of the different items, and the cultures that it's open to. 25 words or less. Did I, I don't know if I did that.
No, I'm just teasing. Go ahead.
I mean, was that enough, or did you have any?
That's a strength. Are there any other strengths you would like to mention? Or is there a weakness that you think should be worked on?
Oh, do I want to bring up a weak, this is like an interview question that you don't want to touch on.
No, it's in the question, so you're free to ask.
That's okay. Probably communication, letting people know what is there, and what is available, what's coming. I went to a cancer, a children's cancer event that I just happened upon a couple few months ago, and it was wonderful, and I, you know, I think that there, well, there has to be, especially in this day and age with technology, and ideal in technology, being able to get the word out without flooding people, to let them know what we have available within our city that's here. You know, it's there for the taking, so to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Knudsen.
What do you see the most significant challenges are? When you said you read the 119 pages of plans, there must be some things in there you would like to advise us on for the challenges for the park system.
Maybe a balance. When I looked at some of the maps, I noticed that there are quite a few, you know, maps, of course, covering different aspects, be it aquatics, or different types of facilities, but making sure that there's a decent balance of things that are available to people in different areas. I'm way out over next to Rice, you know, and so there's not as much out there. Now, are you talking about the program in general, or for the master plan specifically?
No, just park system. What are you?
I would say striking a balance. Now, I understand, you know, you can't have tennis courts everywhere, nor would you want them, but just make sure that you have something that's available. I didn't notice that we have reciprocity with neighboring cities, so, you know, make sure that maybe if we're working on something, like a tennis court, if there's one right across the border, do we need to? Or do we talk to them and say, well, how about a fishing dock? Well, and coordinate with neighboring cities. Maybe with events, too.
Thank you.
And the last question, discuss what the city's priorities should be regarding park maintenance and improvements to city recreational facilities.
Oh, I think it's significant. I would imagine, not, I mean, on the outside currently looking in, but now I'm going to be speaking from the 501(c)(3) aspect. You know, there are groups out there willing to help with worthy projects. I mean, it might be reaching out to corporations in and around the community to assist with fleshing out offerings, be it playgrounds, be it bathrooms, be it barbecues, you know, whatever we might need in areas. The priority, I mean, the priority is bringing people together and taking care of, you know, not primarily the people of Maplewood, but also, again, neighboring communities. I mean, it'd be great to be able to find out who does what in the cities next to us. I have that problem at work, you know? I mean, I don't know who's in cubes away from me, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else to add? Otherwise, we've finished our questions about Parks and Rec. Anything else you want to add?
Volunteer, I've been a lifelong volunteer, I mentioned that. No, I believe I've covered it all.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to Environmental and Natural Resources Commission questions. Councilmember Neblet, your number one.
All righty. Okay. What do you feel you can bring to the Environmental and Natural Resources Commission, including, again, your interests, your talents, life experiences, et cetera?
Well, Mother Nature's there for us, but we have to be there for Mother Nature. So there is a balance. Most of the merit badges, I help with, I coach, I teach 20 merit badges right now, predominantly outdoor-related, and they are sustainability-related, as well as, well, even with fishing, catch and release, but it's, at the same time, you're learning about the species, invasive species, what to, what not to do, and how to get along with, you know, what's around you. I like the education, the sharing of my passion, which is why, while I do have a very strong preference for the Parks and Recs, I mean, I'd be interested in the environmental, just not as much, but I have a lot to learn there, too, and I like learning, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. The ENR Commission focuses on issues related to the environment, such as recycling, solid waste, stormwater management, wetlands, energy, and others. Please share your experiences in working with one of these issues, or other issues related to the environment.
I did work at Calvert Cliffs Nuclear Power Plant back in Lesbey, Maryland, for a while, and out of necessity became pretty well-versed in, well, you have to, I mean, when lights are flashing, but, no, actually, I was amazed at how clean it can be, of course, except for what to do with it afterwards, but, I mean, my eyes were opened to areas of energy that I wasn't previously knowledgeable. And I guess that, you know, I mean, with time, we know that we have fish, and, as well as fusion, that's making headway. I guess it has been for quite a while, but, you know, and wind and solar, the technology is not quite there yet, but it's getting closer by the moment. Nuclear is the one that, I guess you told me to pick one, so I know the most... Nuclear is the one that, I guess you told me to pick one, so I know the most about nuclear and more than I wanted to going in.
Thank you.
Sorry about.
Councilmember Smith, you're on for number three.
So the city of Maplewood tries hard to balance development and property rights with the protection of our natural resources. Where do you see your interests or concerns in the process of balancing those interests?
Wow, okay, so, that is a tough one. You really do have to look at things if you're talking about, you know, leveraging property. Back in Utah, I sat on a board where we had to take property and go through the whole legal process for Department of Transportation, so it doesn't apply here, but I'd imagine that a lot of the aspects are similar. It's always difficult when you try to put a value to somebody's house that's been in the family for generations. However, there is the need of growth and of the city, and, you know, the needs of the many sometimes do outweigh the needs of the few or the one, and it isn't fun, but sometimes it has to happen. And hopefully they get properly compensated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Knudsen.
So what types of environmental policies or practices has the city of Maplewood put into place that you feel have made a positive impact on the city?
Well, I mean, getting back to the Parks and Recs, I think that, in looking at the master plan, your goal to have something available to people within a X range is a phenomenal approach. I didn't realize that, I hadn't seen that in writing ever before. I read your 112 pages. And I think that that's phenomenal. I mean, that, if I didn't know, then I have to assume others don't know. And again, it's a communications thing. I would think that telling people that these things are available, and then if you start getting into, everybody knows about recycle and whatnot, but, you know, what else is there available? Are there groups that might compost or what have you? You know, it's a communication thing.
Thank you.
And the last question, what two environmental issues do you feel the Environmental and Natural Resources Commission should address for the city of Maplewood?
I would start with clean water. Is that what you're asking? I mean, quite literally, okay.
Two environmental issues.
Sure. There's the Isaac Walton League that does quite a bit with water cleanliness, just in general, in cities and outdoor forest areas. So I would say that clean water is huge because, again, that's the health of our next generation as well as all of us. I guess the second, and maybe under, can't do a lot about air with all our neighbors, but maybe noise pollution, you know, I mean, I find that there, things can be loud at odd hours, and how do we do that? I don't know, you know, we'd probably have to get the police involved, but also neighborhood, you know, but, and maybe even putting an ordinance in place to start with. So I'd say noise would be second.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add concerning Environmental and Natural Resources Commission?
I don't, oh, one thing, I mean, you might want to have, I noticed that the Parks and Recs had the, to provide a community environment for all citizens to participate in and enjoy cultural and recreational activities on an equitable basis. I noticed that they didn't have the same business, or what am I trying to say, the same charter, if you will. Might be good to have, you know, something that just encapsulates what they do.
Okay. Thank you. We will be voting on the candidates for the two different open commission slots tonight. If you'd like to stay, we'll be announcing it during our council meeting. If not, staff will make calls tomorrow, or you could also, if you want to, you could go home and watch it online.
I think I'll stay, this is fascinating. I'm already here.
Thank you very much for your interest.
I've got scouts covered for tonight, so you're stuck with me.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your time.
Councilmembers, if you want to submit your ballots to Ms. Coleman. Moving on to our next agenda item. Moving on to the next agenda item, it is the amendment to the ordinance regulating sale of tobacco products. And City Manager Coleman, you are going to introduce this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We have been talking about the T-21 and raising the age limit of tobacco products, or the sale of tobacco products, for quite some time, most recently just a couple of months ago. And tonight, we're going to, we brought back some information from a discussion that we had two weeks ago. There were some questions that we hope to address in the staff report tonight, primarily looking at some of the policies in the cities that are right around us. And so we have done that and brought that information forward to you. It's interesting, in the two weeks that we have last discussed this, a lot has happened in this world of tobacco. Jewel has said they're suspending the sales of their flavored vaporizing, you know, the fun flavors that they attract children with. We have, it's been talked about at the federal level. Just this afternoon, there was a press release from the, two of our legislators, one Republican from Rochester and then Democrat Heather Edelson from Edina, held a news conference today at the Capitol to show support in the House and Senate for raising the age of purchasing tobacco products to 21. They're also the key lawmakers of sponsoring the legislation that would add warnings about vaping to school curriculum, health curriculum. So things are constantly churning and moving on this topic. It's one that has gotten a lot of attention because of several deaths associating with vaping. So we would, what we're looking for tonight, council, we put a draft ordinance in the packet for your consideration. This was written with the help of Ron Beatty and our city clerk Andrea Sint to look at what we could do, what it would look like if we raised the age to 21. We did not get into the vaping question, although that has been addressed in the staff report briefly, and we're open to hearing what kind of direction you would like us to take. If you are interested in adopting an ordinance, the next question for you would be, how much more public comment do you want? We've had a couple of public hearings on this in the last year or two, one just a couple of months ago. And so we're not required by state statute to have a public hearing, but we certainly are open to public comment. We can re-notify people and bring them back. That might take a little longer to get the proper notice out to everybody, but we're here really to answer your questions about the sample ordinance that we put in the packet and to, if there's any further direction that you could give us, we would be appreciative of that. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to call, have you call on Ms. Sint to give the report tonight.
Okay. City Clerk Sint, would you give us the report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So tonight, we're just going to go over two, I'm just going to cover basically two questions that were brought up at the August 14th meeting, which was, number one, what are bordering cities doing? And the second was, can we see what a draft ordinance would look like, increasing the legal purchasing age to 21? So first, I looked, we looked at the nine bordering cities that we have to see what their policies are, and because ordinances aren't necessarily up to date, I did talk to people at the cities to see what was happening. Six, and they all happen to be north and on our north and east borders, six are still at 18. Of those five that are at 18, there has been no discussion at all about increasing, there's been, they have not considered it at all. One has heard from the T-21 advocates, and that was Vadniss Heights, and they decided as a council not to take action with the feeling, and I did get this feeling from all of the six, that this is really a state issue, that they didn't believe that it belonged at the local level. Then there are three, that would be Little Canada, Roseville, and most recently St. Paul that are at 21. Little Canada and Roseville just have raised the age to 21 and have not addressed flavors at all, and there is no talk at this point to do anything with flavors. And then St. Paul, they restricted flavors back about three years ago, and they did a modification allowing off-sale liquor stores to also sell menthol, mint, menthol, mint, and wintergreen. And then just on the 16th of October, they did increase the age to 21. So that is what I've heard from the neighboring cities. I don't know if you have any questions about that at this point, otherwise I'll just go through to what the draft ordinance is, just some highlights about that.
Any questions for Ms. Sint so far, council? Okay. You want to go through the draft ordinance? That would be good.
Yeah, we're just going to go through some of the key points here with the draft ordinance. And as with anything, once we're opening it up, we like to be able to try and fix some things, update some things, get rid of things that are a little problematic in trying to enforce them. And so we have done that. So the red line that you see was taking staff suggestions, it was working with Ron Beatty, actually with Andrew Biggerstaff, and also looking at the Public Health Law Center's suggested changes for our code. So we brought everything together to make sure we were meeting statutory requirements, that we were helping staff with usability, and just updating everything as much as we thought we could at this point. So to go through it, we will see, the first thing is that we removed recitals, which is really just not in keeping with the rest of our code, and it is no longer, the Clean Air Act is well in place, and there was no reason to have that piece there. It is echoed in the purpose, and it was not necessary. Going through definitions, they were, definitions were updated. One of staff's personal favorites was that we used public health's suggestion to create a new definition called licensed products that incorporates the big long list that was throughout the whole ordinance, and we think we probably shaved probably a quarter page off by not repeating everything, and that way we can make sure that everything was covered properly. And one thing to just note about that licensed product, it, the definition does include an electronic delivery device. And because of that, we do have some entities, some businesses, that have a tobacco license because they sell that. They don't have any tobacco, but they sell that device, and so they have a tobacco license. One of the questions that was raised during the hearing from businesses is, what is the age for clerks to be able to sell? And there is no statutory requirement like there is with liquor, but in keeping things consistent, what draft language here shows is that we recommend that sale can be done by anybody 18 or older, so by no minors, and that an applicant for a license needs to be 21. And that is, again, consistent what is happening in the liquor world. When it comes to prohibited sales, we just went ahead and raised that verbiage, to be a person under the age of 21 is who it's prohibited to. And we also removed a section about cigars that was very problematic and confusing for applicants and for staff. And then we also took out a liquid packaging section because it was just verbatim from state statute, was not providing any new information there at all. As far as the smoking prohibited section, that is where some businesses have been allowed to sample after, at the last ordinance change, and of the four stores that were originally allowed, one has now closed. And so rather than list the addresses, you'll see there's language that has been changed to just allow those that were originally licensed prior to that date, which was May 26, 2015. And that way, we don't have to keep modifying the ordinance to take away addresses if things close. And when it comes to the compliance checks, we changed the language so that it was people less than 21 but older than 15. And administrative penalties, it reflects the age of 21 in there. When it comes to the compliance checks, we did not, I just want to point out that the state statute gives us minimums, so we have to charge $75 for the first offense, we have to charge 200 for the second, and 250 plus a seven-day suspension for the third within 24 months. So that is a minimum that we have to do, and we are well above that. And so with, again, we just, I just want to reiterate that any changes, if the council does want to take action at this, we will, we do need to notify all of our tobacco licensees with a 30-day notice that council will be taking a vote. We would supply the ordinance, proposed ordinance, to them so they know what is being looked at. And so just keep that in mind, we do need to do a 30-day notice to them. And with that, I guess I am open to any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been doing some thinking and research about this since last we talked, and, you know, it keeps coming down, in my mind, to balance between individual rights and people's rights to make decisions, good or bad, and I think the impacts of small business and how much we may be impacting revenues within those small businesses, on the one hand. On the other hand, is the impact on public health, particularly with adolescents and those who may be impacted. And so I've really been trying to find more data to drive my decision-making process because there's a lot of feelings around this on both sides. And I guess the two things I've found that are interesting, one is that according to several studies, including the one I'm looking at right now from the National Institute of Health, the total tobacco market for folks between 18 and 21 is about 2% of the total market. So if this ordinance were to completely eradicate smoking within that 18 to 21-year range, the market would lose 2% of its total customer base. So that is, to me, with every other pressure on the reduction of smoking, does not seem to be the thing that's going to break the back of those who sell tobacco. I realize it doesn't help, but I don't think that's going to be the killer. Now, what's more interesting is that I did some number crunching today. So what's really cool is that the National Youth Tobacco Survey, which is from the CDC, it's a survey of about 30,000 youth across the nation, you can actually get the raw data. And so I did some analysis on the data today, and I looked at kids who had reported smoking at least 10 out of the last 30 days, so somewhat habitual smokers. And one of the series of questions was, where do they get their e-cigarettes, those who are vaping? And 49% of them get them from other people. It falls off from there, 10% are getting, 11% are getting them online, and these aren't mutually exclusive, they may get them from multiple places. 38% get them from vape shops, 18% get them from gas stations, but 49% get from other people. Now, when you limit the age range of that same group from all kids, which this ranges from nine to 18 years old, when you take the 17 and 18-year-olds out and look at just the nine to 16-year-olds, 58% of them are getting their e-cigarettes from somebody else, whether that be a whether that be a friend, a family, or another non-family acquaintance. That, to me, was pretty compelling, that by far the most common source of them getting this stuff is from other people. And to me, that is a compelling argument. And they have seen results in some of the other cities or some of the other jurisdictions where they have seen a decrease in usage. The other number that stood out to me was that 67% of the respondents, all of them, said it's easy or somewhat easy for them to get e-cigarettes and tobacco. So that's where my balances of looking at those numbers to say, on the one hand, we're talking about 2% of the total tobacco market and potentially putting that at risk for our small businesses, or for those kids who are smoking or using e-cigarettes today, between a half and two-thirds of them making it very difficult for them to get that, get those things. So from my perspective, I think that's pushed me a bit to the side of moving the age. On the flavor side of things, that's trickier because I do think that if you're, if you're an adult and you're not giving it to kids, and you want to vape bubble gum, I guess I have a harder time with that. And if we do a good job on the T-21 side, I would hope that we could manage the interest and the access that younger folks have to that. So I guess I would be less supportive of a flavor ban. So that's where my head's at right now.
Councilmember? Excuse me, Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, and I struggle with the flavor part of changing that. And in truth, with our public hearings last time, we really didn't talk about stopping the sale of flavors. That, I mean, we had testimony asking us not to consider that. And I, like Councilmember Smith, I have a hard time telling adults that if you want a vape-flavored, do you call it tobacco? What is it? Do vape-flavored vapes?
Juice.
Juice? Then that's your prerogative. I do believe that just looking at our surroundings and hearing the governor, I think it was last week, going to the schools and talking to teenagers, I think that we have to, minimally have to raise the age to 21, minimally. It is another barrier, it is, in front of kids. And the idea to have to think about nine-to-15-year-olds getting vape equipment is just, it's mind-blowing. A nine-year-old is in fourth grade. Yeah, I'm still in favor of raising age. I think as a state, we're moving there. I think as a country, we're probably moving there. It might take a little bit longer, but I'm still in flavor, in flavor, in favor of raising the age to 21. And I think this ordinance that Ms. Sint presented us was really comprehensive. I think it was tight and a lot easier to comprehend, so I thank you for that. And I think that there's, I mean, I think there's still discussions to be had. I do. And I'm not opposed to that. But as of now, I think we need to raise the age. I really do.
Councilmember Knutson, Councilmember Juneman, do you want to weigh in? Councilmember Knutson?
I agree with Councilmember Smith and Neblet. The interesting thing is, you know, it's kind of like we have to do what we can because we know that there'll be worker, you know, workarounds, they'll be, you know, able to buy from others and all that, but you do what you can. You know, the biggest issue to me, of course, is what I study in healthcare is the, we call it, you know, in the insurance industry, moral hazard. And there's a lot of moral hazard, and we don't enforce a lot of the moral hazard. And we enforce seat belts because it's a hazard and an economic hazard. So I think we do what we can, and I think this is a step in that direction. It's not a final solution by any means of the problem, but I believe we do what we
Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do believe it's almost on the, in the category of a no-brainer, particularly up to he gave those statistics, that raising the age can make a difference. Like Councilmember Neblet said, figure, a nine-year-old. Some nine-year-olds are third grade, some are fourth grade. Wow. I just don't think we want that. So I think raising the age is a given, as far as I can see. I think it's down the road, if the state doesn't do anything, which if past experience tells you anything, I'm not holding my breath because turning blue doesn't appeal to me. They talk big at this point, but let's see what happens when January rolls around and they start talking about the session. I don't see it as coming up. I think the governor wants it to be, but it doesn't mean anything. He has two groups of people to deal with. May the force be with him. I do believe at some point that what St. Paul did makes some sense to me, which is restricting the flavors to tobacco-only and off-sale liquor stores, because that is reinforcing who can get a hold of the flavors. So you're not limiting the adult who still wants to be able to do that. I think we need to look at that. I would like to see us move toward that. But until we can go that direction, I see no reason not to raise the age. We've heard too much from kids, and it's not just kids here, it's kids in many places. And they don't relent. If it was something that was a passing thing that they were talking about, they'd relent. But they're not relenting on this one. There's a reason for that. They're serious, and they want us to hear them. So I agree with raising the age, and I do want us, at some point, to pursue how you make the flavors less accessible to younger people as well. Adults can make their own choices, that's true.
Thought I would weigh in last. This is a very emotional issue, and I want to make sure that my decision is based on the facts, and it is based on a variety of interests. And I certainly don't want to be swayed by the emotions of it. I see this maybe from a little different lens. Maybe that's based on my background. I certainly do not want to see our youth smoking. In fact, I don't want to see anyone smoking, but I firmly believe in the ability of adults to make their own decisions. However, I see this through the lens that our priorities here as a city are in direct relation to providing fire, police, water, roads, parks. That's really where our strength is. I believe that this particular issue is not an issue that is a local issue, this is a statewide issue. I look at the tobacco status of Maplewood's bordering cities and the fact that we have six cities that border us that have a legal purchase age of 18. I happen to know that along those borders, we have a number of businesses. And Councilmember Smith, I agree, I appreciate your looking at the, certainly the statistics. I asked City Manager Coleman if she would bring in an article that was in the Minneapolis paper. She told me about it this morning. I don't take the Minneapolis paper. It had to do with the new rules hitting Minneapolis corner stores hard. I believe that the stores that are in our north and eastern part of our city will be hit hard, and I am very concerned about that. I see that this, I believe this so strongly is a state issue, and I see that there are other alternatives to us taking this action, given what is happening currently and the trend that we see, given the fact that there are legislators who are wanting to bring forward legislation. I want to make sure that we try to avoid unintended consequences when what we're really trying to do, all of us, is keep tobacco products away from underaged people. I'm concerned that moving forward as a city with this, that we're really missing a point. And I think in looking at our neighboring cities, I see that all of us have certain abilities in terms of contacting our legislators, and as a group, telling our legislators, we need to do something about this on a statewide basis so that all of our business people then are treated the same. One of the points about, you know, looking at, it's only 2% of the market, the individuals that are between 18 and 21, but according to the article and according to some of the other things that I've looked at, we're not just talking about the sale of tobacco, we're talking about corollary sales as well, where people go into a convenience store and they purchase chips, or pop, or gas, or whatever else that the convenience store happens to be selling. And those are the sales that would be directly lost by our businesses. If, you know, if, I believe that if we want to continue to have this dialogue, I think it's an important dialogue. I think that our business owners, and I see many of them sitting out here in the audience tonight, certainly have something for the council to hear about the impact that this will have on their business. I believe that we can support raising the age, we can support it on a statewide level, we can make this clear, we can talk to other city councils and talk about going together to the legislature and suggesting very strongly that this is a statewide issue. It isn't just a city issue. And I'm concerned that by individual cities taking these positions, that we wind up with a patchwork, and we wind up hurting our small businesses, and we really haven't made this clear to the legislature that they need to take this on, we can't give them a pass on this. This really is a statewide issue. And that's really what my focus is, and so I struggle with this. Because on the one hand, I really am passionate about it. I don't want underage people to have tobacco products. But I believe that our state, our legislators should stand up and that they should take a position on this. I think we should contact Newport, Woodbury, Oakdale, North St. Paul, White Bear Lake, and Badness Heights and talk to them about going to our individual legislators with letters of support that indicates, please take this up, we need to address this, we need to have the dialogue, we can't keep kicking this can down the road, and we all need to do this. Because otherwise, I'm concerned about the businesses that border those six cities and the impact that it's going to have. You know, if we want to continue the dialogue, then I think that we really, since we do have that obligation to notify our business owners, that we give them an opportunity to hear what they have to say, because this is their livelihood. We have licensed them all of these years, and to change the rules now as a city, to me, seems unfair when this is a much larger issue that we have to address as a state. We have that obligation. And I understand the whole domino effect, that if enough cities do it, well, that's not how I want to run things, and that's not how I want to lead as mayor. I think that we need to hold our legislators' feet to the fire, and I think they need to address this so that everyone is going to be in the same condition. We're going to have the same rules, and we are, as a state, going to say that we prioritize the health of our youth, and we are not going to permit sales to anyone under the age of 21. But that really is a statewide issue in my mind.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree that in an ideal world, it's a state issue. I just don't think they're going to do anything about it. And I think that, I've been struggling because I've heard this argument about the total basket value and how this impacts that total basket value and whatnot, but I have yet to see any data or compelling information of what that impact actually is. And if we're talking about a small portion of another small portion of, I mean, not everybody's a smoker, and now we're talking about a small portion of that, and if they are buying nothing, I just, I agree with you that we should take the emotion out of it. And to me, I'm just, I'm not seeing any research or data that's showing me what that actual basket impact is. And if someone could bring that research to me, I'd be happy to see it. But I've been looking for it, and I've not been able to find anything compelling. And I think for me, it's similar to what Councilmember Knutson said, it's just, I think that we have an opportunity to be leaders in the region on this and join some of the other cities that have. Do I think this is solving the problem? No, I'm not stupid. I know it's not going to solve the problem 100%, but I think it's going to help, and I think we got to do what we can. And I think that's, that's an approach. Now, you know, it's, again, as we said last time we talked about this, we don't have to all agree either.
Certainly.
So I think it's healthy when we don't. So anyways, I think that it's, I understand the argument. I am trying to take the emotion out of it to understand from a dollar's perspective, and I guess I'm just not seeing the data yet.
Councilmember? Knutson? Knutson, sorry.
So you're, it sounds like, Mayor, that you're describing a situation where there's timing. In other words, if somehow in the next session, there was an overwhelming support at the legislature, you would agree with that?
I would.
Very good. So it's really just situational right now. And do you know what these other six communities, when you said, let's get these other six communities and go to the legislature, do you know what their position is at all? I don't.
I've certainly talked with mayors from several of these other cities, and they have supported the idea that this is a statewide issue, that they do not want to delve into a statewide issue from a local perspective. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
Just from a historic look at the same type of an issue, different age bracket, but when there was back many moons, when there was the, we aren't going to allow smoking in food establishments anymore. And we heard the sky is going to fall, and we heard that every restaurant that was making any money, particularly with any liquor involved, was going to go under when people couldn't smoke. And it didn't happen. So that kind of plays in the back of my head. The other piece is, I kind of agree with Brian. In a perfect world, I'd love to think that the legislature is going to take this over. 2020 is a what year? Election year? Dream along with me. They're not going to touch anything, pardon the pun, that's hot. And they only did the no smoking in eating establishments way back then because enough individual entities did it, that they went, uh-oh, we're looking really stupid, we better just make this statewide. So while I, would it be nice if it went from the top down? Lots of times, it goes from the bottom up.
Councilmember Neblet?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I guess I, I agree with Councilmember Juneman. Like when the smoking ban in indoors or restaurants happened, it was the right thing to do. Just like raising the age to be able to purchase these things, whether you call it a motion or not, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think that it's okay if we can say, some things are right and some things are wrong. And I just think that this is a very small step in doing the right thing.
Then I think, yeah, real quick. The next, Councilmember Smith, do you have one more thing to say? Otherwise, I wanted to wrap this up and talk about the process. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Sure. I was just going to say, I think, in, in respect for business owners, what I do think, though, is we should have a fairly good period of time of, of phase-in for something like this, to give those owners, to your point about, we've been licensing for a long time, this is the way things have been for a long time, I don't think this is something we should just have changed like that. That, to me, being a good partner with business is not necessarily just doing whatever, whatever might be in their best interest, but also to be predictable and reasonable about how quick things change. So I think I would be open to having a fairly good period of time in which we transition to something like this, to give those folks the ability to shift their business plans and, and adapt.
Thank you for that. At this point, then, I think we need to talk more or less about the process because I think we've all shared our thoughts on this, and certainly what I would encourage is that since we have to notify our businesses, which is the right thing to do, that we are going to be considering this, I would like to have an opportunity for our businesses to share that information about the basket value, about their businesses, so that we can learn where they are, what they are, what their concerns are, so that we can hear that. If we are, because four of you are, are interested in moving forward, forward with this, I would like to have an opportunity for our businesses to respond to this.
Sure. Absolutely.
And so staff recommendations in terms of what that looks like? What kind of timing in terms of putting together a public opportunity for our businesses to come and respond?
Ms. Cent can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have to give 30-day notice, which takes us to the end of November, which then takes us to one meeting left in December, so.
Okay, Councilmembers.
Would January be acceptable time to let the businesses kind of prepare and their data if they have it? And I also appreciated Mr., Councilmember Smith's comment about a phase-in time. You might want to think about what that looks like in your mind, too. Is that six months? Is it till the legislature ends or, you know, see if they, I mean, we could still lobby the legislators if we think that's important. There is, I think, some momentum going there, but whether that is sustained, I don't know.
I would like to, to seize that opportunity and actually communicate with our six other neighboring cities about sending some type of joint communication to all of the legislators that represent, that's got to be a large number of legislators that we could be communicating with. I think a joint letter from our councils urging them to do something on a statewide basis, but, Councilmembers, so then what I'm hearing is January, and then we would send out the notice in advance so that our businesses would have an opportunity to come to a public opportunity to voice their opinions and share additional information in January?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Knutson.
Just one question. Does any, I don't remember the process of limiting smoking in restaurants. Was that community by community, or did?
Yeah.
So it was, it had a similar kind of problem to it.
Yes, it did.
Timing and who was, who was going to get harmed with that? Just a point of clarification. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to recommend what, how, you know, moving fast has never been, I think, something that's served us well. I'm wondering if, do we even push it out till February so that we can see if there are any bills in session that are getting traction? To have an idea of, you know, by then we'll know what's at least getting readings, what's, what's.
I'm amenable to that.
Something like that, so we just know there's, have a little bit of that data at that time. It doesn't, you know, throw it out two or three weeks to kind of get a feel for what's happening at the legislature. Because I, you know, again, at the end of the day, if state does it, great.
And in the interim, Councilmembers, if we put together, excuse me, if we put together a letter to go to our neighboring six cities inviting them to join us in communicating with our legislators, to put something onto their radar, does that sound amenable?
Can I ask a clarification?
City Manager Coleman.
Mayor Abrams, do you see that letter being drafted from me to, on your behalf, to city managers to get them to the city councils, or do you?
That would be a good idea.
Might be more expedient?
That would be a good idea.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. With that, Councilmembers, we are concluded with our agenda, and with that, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 7:00 for our regularly scheduled meeting.